We're gonna go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It is Tuesday, March 19th at 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Rusado?
Here.
Etang?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chancet? Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden.
Okay, we have a full quorum. Item two is reminder for everyone to please use the microphone so we can get good recording and viewers at home can hear what we have to say. Item number three is approval of the minutes for February 26, 2019, and March 12, 2019. Everybody had an opportunity to review that? Does anybody have any questions? No questions, can you get a motion?
So moved?
Second. Motion by Stark, second by Uer to recommend to the city council approval of the minutes for February 26 and March 12. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Item four is items removed, added or changed. Laura, do we have anything?
No.
Okay. Item five is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Item six, monthly wastewater treatment facility update. Alman O'Brien?
Well, we have Scott Trotta from Trotta and Associates who is gonna give us our monthly update.
Must mean they're really far behind.
That's right. They sound like big guys tonight.
Yeah, they brought the big gun. Sorry, I had to do that.
Actually, Jerry has a very good excuse this time, so they just had their first.
Yes.
Oh.
So we'll give him a pass this week.
Mm-hmm.
He'll be back next week, hopefully.
Could've brought the...
Be with him.
That seems to work, doesn't it?
So, the update, hopefully this will move right through. See, that's why we need Jerry here.
We know all the windows are in.
Yep. It's one thing to do that.
You have to scroll down.
Scroll down.
Yeah, see, there you go.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you.
Sure. I'm done here.
Got a night.
He's out.
So, very briefly, I'll just let you know that we are in the process of commissioning several of the pieces of equipment over the last month. The contractor's been working on the main building electrical, working on the flooring and finishes, which are mostly in. We have some inspections yet to go, so the ceiling tiles need to be dropped yet, and some final painting needs to be done. But we're very close to finalizing the interior of the main building as well. Site power and distribution has all been completed, gates are installed, we're working on some of the controls for the gates as well still. So, the digester operations building, which is the new building at the south end, is in a position that it can be commissioned as well as soon as the main switchgear in the main building is fully powered. And then the electrical on the digesters was the final touch. So, all of the piping is installed, most of the electrical is installed, and we're commissioning over the next five weeks, starting this week.
So the underground electrical that was the issue, that's been fixed?
That has been resolved as well, yes. So some of the project photos, hopefully Jerry had a little bit of time to update them. That's February 16. We still had a little snow on the ground. This is the back of the building. This is today. You can see that the doors are in, window glasses in. We have a few pieces of glass yet to be put in because we're starting up the HVAC system, so we had to keep heat in the building. Once those furnaces are fired up, we'll be able to finish out, get the hoses off the building, and replace the rest of the glass. Actually, the front doors are expected to be delivered yet this week, so the building will have a finished look.
Scott, can I stop you there?
Yes, sir.
At the last update, there was a lot of, Mike, you know, the affluent or whatever you call it, the white...
Fluorescence.
Yep. And Jerry had thought that maybe that was a lot of from the saw cutting up on the roof or what have you, but you can see it now on the front and the back, so do we know...
That's correct. We've talked to the mason about it. The entire building will be cleaned and sealed once again. So, it is on the punch list, and it will be addressed. I don't think it will be an ongoing issue, but it's something that needs to be addressed before we finalize the project.
So, to follow up on that, that's just salts leaching out of the...
From the masonry themselves. Masonry and proud, yes.
Right. So that could be a potential problem. It's something we should keep an eye on.
Absolutely, yes.
Mike, I don't think...
Please, come up, come up. Byron, come up, please.
I don't think they got the sealer on the north side, south side, and east side. They did wash it, but they ran out of time. Due to winter, they can't apply the sealer after a certain temperature.
Right.
I think if you see the west side there, it's been sealed. That's actually an anti-graffiti type sealer on that side. And I, we don't really have any on that side that I can recall. I can't see it in that picture. So, I think once they get the sealer on it, wash it, and then get the sealer on it, that's what I've been told with Dan Gillespie and the contractor, too, so...
Right, okay. I guess I would then, staying on that, beg the next question. How long does the seal last?
I'd have to get back to you on that, Mike. I've...
Because it tends to reseal buildings, but I...
Right. It's not usually on a normal maintenance schedule. We usually do it as part of an overall project. So, I would hope, actually, I just can't tell you. I don't... So this is the anaerobic digesters, and the masonry's been replaced on that building as well. And this is the new building at the south end of the site, which is referred to as the digester operations building. This building houses the intermediate pump station, which will be removed in the future phase, as well as the boilers to keep the digesters hot, and all of the pumps that transfer sludge within the site. So overall, the project cost is $27 million. We are beyond 90 percent. This is a February estimate of where we were. The current contract cost with the contractor, I just had it here, is $26,500,000. So, we're very close, very few change orders overall so far. So approved change orders to date, $367,000, 1.4 percent. Looking at the overall project schedule and realize that this is very hard to read, they did lose eight days during February. Currently, they are proposing that April 21, I believe, is they'll reach substantial completion, and June 8, they'll reach final completion on the overall project. So they're about 170 days behind on the overall schedule. So, that is our update for this moment. If there's any questions.
Finished?
I am.
Well, then, I'll say something. Anybody have anything to say? Any questions for Scott?
What else is there to say at this point?
You know, we had discussion on the masonry. I just drive by the site, and it is no reflection at all, just so you're clear, it's no reflection at all on the workmanship. It's just, it's the product itself. So, you know, please understand that.
Yes.
And it looks great. I think it looks great. And so, Byron, what do you think? What are your thoughts?
I think it looks...
It's gonna be your building.
I think it would've looked greater if it would've been done a little better.
Yeah, it would've looked even better, right.
Great if it broke during our tour right now.
I'm scared if we get it from the outside, I don't want to get it from the inside.
Right. So when do you move in?
Well, we have to, we have to get some occupancy permits that we'll need up. We'll need, you know, all of the safety equipment, fire suppression, elevators, all of that stuff before we can move in. But Jeff has told us that once those things are done, and once his conditions are met, that he can give us a temporary to where we can at least start moving our offices in. We may not have all the new equipment running by then, but...
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, hopefully by that April 21 date, we'll be moving some furniture.
And you'll just be mostly doing punch lists anyway?
That's correct. By that time, once all of the equipment has started up, then we can start to transfer product into the anaerobic digesters, and it'll take some time for those to actually seed and start up, and the entire process to be working, because it has a residence time of roughly 30 days. So, it'll take some time for that to begin functioning. But we should be able to do that by the end of April.
Just one last thing is, again, it's been said before a couple of times, but, you know, I want everyone to know, you know, the change orders are very, they're very low, which is just a testament to you and Jerry, obviously Jerry, for staying on top of the construction, because that's when things tend to run away if you're not really following it closely.
Thank you very much.
And so, and for the planning involved in it, you know, the detailing it and the planning of it. So thank you for keeping them low. So, it's just saved the city a large sum of money.
My team's very proud of the project as well.
Thank you.
Are we still planning on an open house sometime after it's open then now, or what are we looking at?
Yes.
Yes.
Hopefully get some...
We'll invite you back.
Hopefully get some grass growing and have our staff educated and trained, and working on some of the equipment before they can, you know, stand there and go, well, that's one of those, you know? So hopefully they'll have some expertise by the time we do a tour.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go on to item seven. The next four or five items are all Alman Stark's ordinance 19-02, establishing the special service area number 65 for Barki Farms subdivision, unit 1, 2, and 3. Alman Stark.
Okay. So, this first one is Barki, is it Barki? Barki. Barki. See, it took all eight years to learn how to pronounce some of these things. Barki Farms would like a monument sign at the entrance to their subdivision at Fox Trail Drive and Hart Road. And so, to do this, they, we needed to propose an SSA. And SSA 65 has, we approved it on January 22. As of this writing of the petition, which happened, or this memo on March 14, there was no petition and opposition. So, the SSA 65 would be a backup SSA, and it remains dormant and not appearing on a tax bill, or it does appear, but it appears with a tax rate of zero. If the HOA fails in its obligation to maintain its common facilities like the sign and stormwater management, open spaces, and the city were doing current expense to maintain one or more of these facilities, a public hearing would be held to activate the SSA, imposing a maximum tax levy of 50 cents per $100 of equalized assessed valuation of each tax parcel as specified in the annexation agreement in ordinance 1902. So, our alternatives here are, we can approve it, or not approve it, or make revisions. The pros, of course, are that it will create the backup SSA as contemplated in the annexation agreement, allowing for the entry monument sign. The cons, there aren't any cons that staff has identified. Budget impact is just time. There's some, excuse me, in addition to the HOA reimbursing the city for its direct cost for notification, the HOA will reimburse to record the ordinance and timeline. There will be a public hearing on April 1 city council meeting, and then we can adopt the ordinance at that meeting. And staff recommends that we proceed with it as presented. Does anyone have any questions?
I just ask if either one of the Alman from that ward have had any info from anybody or any comments?
Hold the mic up.
Or any comments from anybody in the ward about it?
Nobody's responded to me at all. I haven't heard anything.
The homeowners association had done a pretty good job communicating with the residents about the situation, so I think that, you know, they addressed any concerns the residents had, so that's why there's really been no feedback.
And this is not the same group as came in before en masse, right? Was that Fox Trail?
That was a different subdivision, yes.
Okay.
It's not this one.
I remember that it was adjoining this, okay. So, would someone like to recommend to city council ordinance 1902, establishing special service area number 65 for Barki, Barki Farms subdivision?
So moved. Second.
Motion by, oh, Serone, second by Wolf. Post Salvati.
Second.
Sorry. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Well, that goes on the regular agenda because we have to have a public hearing.
Yep.
Okay, item number eight, ordinance 19-22, annexing 320 Ellen Lane. Alman Stark.
Okay, this is a combined memo that came out from Scott viewing. This is for 320 Ellen Lane, 3 South 102 Wagner Road, 2 South 396 South Redant Road, and 2 South 420 Redant Road. And again, these are those little islands that we're trying to annex into the city. And they were requested to submit voluntary petitions to annex, but other than the property on Redant, Scott didn't receive any response from the property owners, and therefore, per statute, we have published the required legal notice and have sent the property owners the required mailed notice in order to involuntarily annex the properties. The property on Redant was already on city water and sewer, and was required under the utility agreement to annex the property into the city. The city already maintains the street in front of these properties, and they are wholly bounded by city limits. So, our alternatives are to annex the properties or do not annex the properties. Pros, of course, it will be closing up those little donut holes, and the city will realize an increase in property taxes as well as head taxes after the 2020 census. We already maintain the roads in front of all of these properties. There are no cons. The budget impact for recording and documents is about $350. There's no impact on staffing. If we pass this onto the city council, the annexations would be effective April 3, the day after election, and staff does recommend that we annex all these properties. Does anyone have any questions?
You know, I would just make note that we've been visited by the census people, and they're very interested in getting an accurate and updated count on Batavia, you know, and these, I think, will add up to, what, 20, 30 more people?
More than that. I mean, it's, in total, it's like 200 homes, so...
And of course, you know, the state of Illinois, that's how they divvy up whatever they have left of state income tax. Originally started out at 12 percent now of the total pot, and then it's redistributed statewide on a per capita basis. So it's your number that generates more money for you. You know, under the 1970 constitution, it was 12 percent of the state income tax. Now, the previous administrations, both Democrat and Republican, have hacked into it, and the suspicion is, nobody seems to be able to tell us what it really is. It's probably a good opinion that's between 5 and 6 percent. But it's still, you know, and more people is more money for us. So I would certainly encourage us to try to get as much of this done as we can before we start counting people next year, and certainly the staff will have it ready to share with the census people that these unincorporated areas are now in the city, and everybody in those houses should be counted.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to recommend to city council ordinance 1922, annexing 320 Ellen Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meitzler, second by Uer. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Would someone like to recommend to council ordinance 1923, annexing 3 South 102 Wagner Road?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Salvati. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion also carries. Would someone like to recommend to council ordinance 1924, annexing 2 South 396 and 2 South 420 South Redant Road?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Malley, second by Uer. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That also carries.
But these aren't consent?
Yeah.
Those actually have to go on regular agenda because of the fact we did notices for these, so those will have to be on the regular agenda.
Okay, item 11, resolution 19-035-R, authorization to purchase truck equipment in the amount of $212,619 from Monroe Truck Equipment. Alman Wolf?
Thank you. This is for new dual axle truck, antimaxle truck with plow. We had actually had that set up to go last year. Did we order two of these and pay for one last year, and then we're paying for the second one this year?
We actually purchased both chassis's last year in 2018.
Okay.
And they have, they, those were out of the 2018 budget.
The equipment is what's...
What's for you tonight is the equipment for those two. And then Scott explains later in his memo that we'll still buy another chassis this year, but we can't afford to buy a chassis and the equipment this year, so we'll do the equipment in 2020.
So do we take delivery of the chassis's and then just have them here, or they just stay where they're at until they're built out?
We have to take delivery from the budget and auditing standpoint, and then they get shipped out to the equipment.
So then they ship it to the equipment manufacturer till we pay for the rest of it?
Well, two different companies anyway.
Okay.
So, yeah, we get them in, and the auditors, we have to receive them in order to be in that budget, and then ship them out to an equipment manufacturer, equipment supplier, I should say, and outfitter.
And they probably take a bit of time to get those ready, right?
They do, yeah. It's gonna be months.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this, Mark?
I guess I just had a question on some of that equipment. Is that reusable at all for us to take from our existing trucks, like the plow and the salt portions of it?
After 18, 19 years, I mean, the plows are well-used. And they're, you know, pretty hard, heavy-duty, so I, there's not a whole lot you could sacrifice out of an old truck and get another 20 years out of it. I think you're asking for more problems than anything else.
Okay, just curious.
I know.
And then I think, too, is like a fully outfitted truck, when you go to try to sell that, probably reap more benefit trying to sell that or trade it in, or, you know, wholesale it is probably a better route with all that on it.
An example, pre-wetting and pretreatment, which is the liquid, really, that technology in 2001, not that the technology didn't exist, but people weren't equipping their trucks for it. So, that's an example of, like, the old trucks don't even have some of the equipment that we're now gonna be putting out.
And we've been using stainless steel beds on these, right?
Yeah, those are those. Skyhan said that some of the stainless steel beds that he first purchased when he first became street superintendent, the beds themselves are in great shape. So, that's why we've really now just exclusively gone with it.
But that's also value when you try to resell it, too.
Definitely value when you go to resell it, yes.
Gary, I got a question. I don't see it right now. When I was reading through it over the weekend, I saw it, but I was gonna ask the question that, as far as the anti-icing goes, it looked like it was some type of a road monitor system, and I'm not finding it right now. Do you know anything about that? If not, I can just shoot Scott an email. Something about, and it appeared to me, the way it looked, is it's gonna monitor, I'm guessing it was gonna monitor the condition of the road, and then apply based on that?
So our, and I don't have the exact sentence here either, but that's, that is standard also in many of our new trucks, is the, it can monitor the pavement. It manages things like pavement temperature, and optics can tell you about things like ice cover and stuff.
Yeah.
And then, and that feeds the computer to then tell what type of treatment to put down. Yes.
Does anybody else have any questions? As far as being over budget, where is that gonna come from, or is that just gonna get pushed, part of it pushed into the next?
That's why we're just sliding. Yeah, we're just sliding into but future budget here.
I see where it's at. It's the onboard pre-wetting system, fully operational for dispensing. No, that's not it. That's okay, I'm good.
Yeah, the pre-wets, the...
That's what?
You spray on, you spray on the salt before the salt goes onto the pavement to make the salt stickier, so it sticks to the pavement.
There are no other questions? Would someone care to make a motion to recommend resolution 19-035-R, authorization to purchase truck equipment for the amount of $212,619 from Monroe Truck Equipment?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Callahan, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries.
Consent?
Do we have to...
It can go on consent.
Okay.
It actually goes through the joint purchasing.
Contract.
And we've got different quotes, so...
Okay. Yeah, we'll just put on consent.
All right, thanks, Gary. Item number 12 is the annual report for human resources, the police department and the fire department. And Laura Newman, are you gonna start us off with that?
Yes, I'd like to. Wendy Bednerick, our human resources director, is up first with her annual report from 2018. Wendy has one other full-time member of her department and a part-time employee, and together, the three of them do an extraordinary amount of work. We have six collective bargaining agreements here at the city of Batavia, and at one point in time, it made sense to negotiate all six of those contracts in tandem. And we did reach agreement on all of those. And unfortunately, what that meant was, as Wendy was coming on board, just a year after she came on board, all of those contracts were expiring at the same time. And then, not only that, but she was able to reach agreement on those collective bargaining agreements, but then we had our Sam's Club close at the exact same time, and so we negotiated one-year agreement. So guess what she's doing again this year? She's once again negotiating all of those agreements, and she's doing a tremendous job with it. Can you give the statistics of how many agreements we've reached and how many we have yet to reach agreement?
So, currently, we have one that's been approved by you guys and moved forward. It was just a wage reopening through IFF. And then we have one that is very close to nearing completion, and then the others are still open, so...
And it was in the fall of 2017 when Wendy collaborated with the city of Geneva in order to save us money on doing a wage study. One of those things that we try to look for, ways that we can collaborate with our neighboring communities, and because a lot of the positions in our two organizations are very similar, it made sense to do so, and we saved a little money doing it that way. And while Geneva concluded and presented the results of their wage study in 2018, again, due to the Sam's Club closure, it just did not seem to be an appropriate timing to go through recommendations with regard to results of the wage study. And so then, in the second half of last year, because the data was now about one year old, Wendy worked with the same consultant to update the results, and she is going to present that as part of her presentation today. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Wendy.
Great, thank you. So, Laura talked about this a little bit, but just kind of as a reminder, I just made this quick slide of all the things that HR is involved in, in regards to the traditional things, hiring and all of those fun stuff. Additionally, collective bargaining, policy and procedure development, assistance with payroll, and the fact of processing all the appropriate changes and notifying payroll, that takes up a significant part of my administrative time, workers' compensation and different. So I'll go through all of these different pieces as we go through that. Currently, we have, it kind of swings between, with the part-time group, but we have approximately about 240 employees with the part-time group, and with two and a half of us in the department. So, if you may recall, at the last annual update, I had listed, hopefully going forward, some of those KPIs or those key performance indicators, and I pulled the data for 2018, and I'll go through those. And then hopefully, in the future going forward, I wanna maybe create a different look for that, so that you can kind of compare year to year going forward. Under recruitment, last year, we had 11 job postings that we completed. We received 281 applications. Currently, our application system is still manual. People fill out a paper application, and we print it. So hopefully, at some point in the future, I'd like to move forward. One of the things we are looking at is Civic Plus, our website designer utilizes an online application, very basic, but hopefully, if anything, it might be a first step for us. So something through our web design, I'm, we're talking about looking at. And then HR itself conducted 63 interviews between my HR specialist and myself, and then there have been some other interviews outside of, like, for example, seasonal. We might do an initial screening, but then, like in Public Works, they'll handle those, We might do an initial screening, but then like in public works, they'll handle those, just the pure labor amount of time. Under turnover, last year, we had twenty new hires, conducted twenty new orientations. We had twenty-five terminations. What I did is, under the terminations, I split them out, just so you get an idea of what that number entails. Five of them were retirements, four of them were seasonal. So while they are truly important in our summer season to public works, they wouldn't be considered a core group. We expect them to come and go. And then twelve paid-on-call firefighters. As you know, with that position, many time with them, many times with them being part-time, that is kind of a rotating. We have quite a few people coming in and out of that position. So if you were to pull those, those numbers out, we had four employees in the city leave for a different reason besides those listed. So very low turnover. Our overall turnover altogether is, including everyone, is eleven percent. Last year, it was at twelve percent. And then our regular workforce turnover, taking all of those seasonal or paid-on-call firefighters, it falls at four percent, and last year it was at six percent. Under workers' compensation, in 2018, we had fifteen reportable, OSHA reportable claims, which the number was down a few. So we've continued over the last three years to see a decline in workers' compensation claims, which is a really, really good thing. Currently, we have twenty-three active claims. That's for all years. So as you know, some claims can linger through the Illinois Industrial Commission for many years. So we have twenty-three current active claims. And then last year's total cost was one-hundred-and-nineteen-two-thirty-five for, including medical, legal, all of those things out there. The only thing I would caution with that number is, is that not all of the claims for last year are closed. So I don't want to give the impression that that's a final number. That number could change from. Could, it will, it will increase into next year or into this upcoming year. Under employee relations, last year, we had six union contracts that were settled, and we had two grievances filed, very minor, but went through the process. But I think that's a really good testament on the number of employees that we have in a union in all six groups. And we had two small grievances that, of course, ultimately through the path went to Laura, and then they were resolved and addressed, and we moved forward. So, and so the process worked as it should. Under employee appreciation, overall, we had hosted or had five all-employee events, including things, as you know, we have employee appreciation picnic. We have a pancake breakfast and some various things that we do throughout the year. Just, these are rough numbers, but approximately during, for those events, we kind of, what I call touches, we've touched eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine employees at some point, provided them a recognition of some sort. So as you know, that's tw- or what, four times the number of, or two, whatever the math is. I can't do that right now, of the number of employees we have. And then we also had five employee retiree celebrations. We also had one today. So we already have one into this year's books. Under 2018 accomplishments, first is we moved my office. It sounds like a small accomplishment, but still, as you may know, I originally was down in the administrative wing. And I found as far as we had hoped, there'd be some remodel, but that did not happen. So I moved down and I'm in the HR wing. I think that's provided continuity in my office for me to be able to work with my staff as well as availability to the employees. That was very important to me. There's a locked door into the administrative wing, and I wanted to be able to be available and talk to employees. So personally, I found that to be a very good thing that's worked well in my office. Additionally, the ACA, the ten ninety-fives, you guys probably all received those from your employer if you currently have health insurance. The ACA ten ninety-five process was handled in-house, and this year, we were able to get it automated through our benefit solver, which is our online employee portal that handles our insurance. We also rolled out new voluntary supplemental insurance plans through Allstate Insurance. Allstate Insurance provides our employees through a voluntary plan, things such as cancer, long-term disability, short-term disability, accident coverage, those types of coverage. And with them, we were, we've had them for quite many years, but we sat down with them. They had some new plans out, as well as some good competitive rates. So we rolled those out, so we had meetings with literally every single employee over a series of a couple weeks. We continue to have an intergovernmental collaboration of lead training. We haven't really necessarily, we don't talk about it a whole lot, but as you may recall, lead spending collaboration is between St. Charles, Elgin, and Batavia, in that we provide training to all of our employees. We've been doing that for many years and continue to have that collaboration typically. Last year, we have two large events that we have some really good leadership-type of speakers come in. And then they also do some book clubs to allow some smaller groups. This year, we're trying something new in the spring. This spring, we are currently, every municipality of the three, they're each taking a topic that's important to them and providing more of an individualized training to make sure we find some benefit that we're reaching all employees. So for example, and still, everyone is able to participate. But for example, Elgin just held a new supervisor training, which some of our employees were able to attend. St. Charles will hold FOIA training, and then we are gonna handle conflict resolution training, which is gonna be in May. So it's a new idea, again, trying to make sure that that, that need is meeting the needs of our employees. We have, in 2018, mentioned this before, we settled six union agreements. And then Benefit Solver implementation, I've talked about this in the past, if you may or may not recall. It's our employee portal that handles all of our, houses all of our insurance information. It's through IPBC, and we had some rough hiccups initially with the system and getting them up to, up to speed. So at the end of last year, finally, we felt confident that the data was accurate, the rates were correct. So all of that information is now in the system. So this year, we're gonna be working on moving forward and doing online enrollment, paperless, online enrollment with all the employees. We also started up the Health and Wellness Committee. I'm very excited. That's gonna be in, definitely a focus into 2019. And really, to get from every group, whether it's the union groups or just employee groups, everyone at the table getting buy-in for the different, not only talking about our insurance, but also our wellness initiatives within the city. And then additionally, we were able to increase our biometric screening participation by thirty percent. We still would like to continue to increase that, and that's also gonna be a focus, but something that, within our office, we worked on. And then we also completed, this is just an internal thing, but personnel file project, was something not fun, but needed to be completed, taking the personnel files and getting them all uniformed and filed correctly. So we are collecting all the information. Two thousand and nineteen future and ongoing projects, mentioned, I think I've almost mentioned all of these, but online employee benefits portal, Benefit Solver, we're gonna be working on going paperless for open enrollment this year, which will be October, November. HRIS system, this year, we're gonna be working on putting together an RFP to review if there are more effective systems out there. Currently, we've talked about this, is that many of the processes we do are manual. For example, I spent most of my day today tracking certifications in the fire department for payroll, and we do it by an Excel spreadsheet with a checkbox. So those are things that take a lot of our time, and it definitely would be great if we can get a system that can house that information and produce it for us. Continued, very excited about the Health and Wellness Committee initiatives. We're gonna continue to move those forward. In fact, even next month, we're gonna be meeting as a committee to talk about different expirations under health insurance cost containment. One of the things that we hear from employees is that, you know, not only the insurance, while we provide very good insurance, and that, but when someone gets ready to retire or anything along, the cost of the insurance is very, very expensive. And so we're gonna be looking at offering some different types of options and making it more consumer-driven. And the thing I'm excited about is having the committees buy-in with that rather than me just bringing these ideas forward. So also, we wanna continue to increase by the participation in the biometric screenings. There's been data that shows, we've seen it within our, for the last several years, that there is a estimated cost savings from doing the biometric screenings and seeing people do healthy lifestyle choices or issues being caught, caught early versus the medical costs that could be in the future. And then do more wellness programs. My hope is, I think there's definitely benefit to wellness, but with just two and a half people in the office, it makes it hard to do the fun programs and keep them going. So with the committee, definitely having more hands and to help out is gonna be very nice. Still working with the union negotiations and all six groups. So hopefully, it will be bringing longer-term contracts that will provide hopefully some stability to the groups as well as some, you know, costs to be able to understand what we have in the future. So you'll be seeing these throughout the year. And we still have some additional records retention projects. We have some other filing under what's considered confidential or medical documentation. I think I mentioned last time too, is that a lot of that information at one point was housed in different departments. A few years ago, it got brought in, so it's kind of a hodgepodge. So we're trying to, to have it organized, and so my administrative staff's gonna be working on that. And then the last thing is preparing for a 2020 dependent audit. We, through IPBC, which I think is a good thing to do, but it's gonna be a big undertaking, is IPBC is mandating that through anyone who carries our medical insurance, that we need to complete a dependent audit of proof that they are in fact dependents. So that mandate has to be completed in 2020. So we're gonna be doing all the preparation this year to get ready for that. Up until this point, while, you know, someone comes in and says, hey, I got married, you fill out the form and you move forward. But there's been proof shown that through dependent audits, especially for IPBC as a, as a wide risk pool, there could be some significant cost savings in finding if, if say, someone's insured that shouldn't be or whatever the case may be. But we will have to go back to all of our employees and say, hey, I need your marriage license, or I need your birth certificate. And so as you can imagine, not everyone likes being asked that, so it's always a fun conversation. So it'll be a lot of work involved in that, so we'll be working on that. So I am gonna switch over to the compensation study, if any, or if anybody has any questions about anything else.
Just a question on the biometric screenings. I'm really glad to see that increasing. What is the participation?
Currently, we're at, we're low. We're at about thirty-eight percent.
Okay.
So my goal is, I'd love to get us at a minimum at fifty, if not closer to seventy to seventy-five percent. Yeah, to really show any true, true large cost savings.
Yeah, and that, the benefits of that, the cost savings can be tremendous from that. I've seen that with multiple employers. But also, even on top of that, which is almost better, is the quality of life employees too, that that can, you know, can really help people.
So I think the people that have participated have given us really positive feedback on the company that we use and the information they provide with them. They provide them with life coaching after the fact and different resources. And it's been very positive, but as you can imagine, sometimes it's just a matter of convincing an employee to come in and have it done. So.
I was gonna say, one of the things that we will be proposing in the future is to look at a nominal incentive to encourage employees to participate because even catching just one employee's significant health issue before it becomes acute pays for that.
Absolutely.
Wendy, do you find the workers' comp dropped a bit? Do you find that attributed to the Health and Wellness Initiative?
I know that formally, the Health and Wellness Initiatives have kind of just kicked off. We kicked it off in the fall of last year, so I don't know that we have a lot of per se data to say these initiatives are in fact working. I think something in regards to workers' comp for the last, at least during the time that I've been here, talking with the supervisors, they've made it forefront. And while we've always said safety is important, I would probably give the credit to the department heads for making that important in their departments. And then additionally, the other piece of it as well is that within my department, I, I take, make it a priority to really manage each case. While it can be time-consuming, but really to ensure if there are lingerers or people along those lines that we're managing and getting those cases closed out and addressing them, so. All right. So after this, I will, this is a lot of information. So I will post this and make this available for all of you guys to spend some more time looking at it, the data specifically. And if, and then as you have more questions. What I wanna go over today is really kind of the overall of what the wage comp study had said and what the information we've gleaned from it and where we're, where we're going. So Laura had to mention this, but I'll, as a reminder, just we had engaged Arthur Gallagher to perform the compensation study for the city of Batavia. And there's, what they were to assess is our competitiveness of our current pay in comparison to the market and make any recommendations for our salary structure, to take a look at our salary structure. While we weren't necessarily saying we wanted a different salary structure, but to say, is our salary structure working? The city and as with Gallagher, we developed and administered a compensation survey that was sent out to all of our competitive, comparison organizations. And as mentioned, we had done this with the city of Geneva. Our comparables are the same, and many of our positions were the same. So for economies of scale, that helped save money from the study perspective. And then additionally, just Gallagher had put in this slide, is the following items were provided by the city was, we provided all the salary and pay range data, and then also, we contacted the comparables if we were having difficulty getting the information back. So the objectives are, we wanted to compare the city's current salaries to the fiftieth percentile of the market, called the median. So that was kind of our objective is, as you see, when you look at all of the comparable information, it's comparing it to the median. Compare the city's salary structure to the market, and then propose any salary structure update if necessary. So this is a little bit hard to see, but with Geneva and ourselves, we had taken a look at the positions. While we did not survey every single position, we took a portion of what would be considered our comparable positions. And typically, when you look at comp study data, if you survey, and I apologize, I can't remember the percentage off the top of my head right now, a portion of it, it validates and makes the comp study correct. So if you can find all of the information in the study is making sense, then most likely, all of the other positions will, are falling into place appropriately. So you'll see there's a few lines through them, like for number three, number twenty, number twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-two. Those actually were Geneva-specific positions. And then we had a couple that were ours as well, but, so all of those, the rest of the positions were comparable, and we, those were part of the study. So the survey methodology, we of course collect, created a survey. Eleven cities and towns were identified as comparable organizations. The comparables were identified through the standard process of considering population, distance, our EAV, our sales tax, and our general fund revenue, and making sure those communities were close to those. So typically, when you see that, you see a lot of their organizational structures are very similar. And then we actually had a hundred percent response rate, which was great. The methodology itself, Gallagher followed up with each organization. We helped contact them. They reviewed the data. Of course, they were the ones that received all of the data, put all the information together. They validated any information they didn't quite understand. And then they asked the organization to make sure if they were responding, that the job itself. So each organization not only got the position, but they got the job description attached. And they were supposed to review that, because as you imagine, we all call it, we like to call it something creative. So everybody has a different name for it. So they matched the job description, and we asked that if there's at least an eighty percent match, then they would provide salary data for that. All the data was effective July two thousand and seventeen, and it's in the form of an hourly salary. And then I, we updated all the information. It now has two thousand and nineteen data. And then Gallagher also follows the U.S. Department of Justice and Federal Trade Commission guidelines. The state five job matches should exist per job in order to conduct the statistical analysis. So that also gives validity to the study. If we're, well, I don't anticipate, but if for some reason we were to be challenged with the study or whatever the case may be, following that methodology definitely gives us some validity of it. So continued with the methodology, I won't read all of this. Probably the middle section that you see in the blue is really, what gives you the outline of it, is that when you look at compensation and you're looking at the percentages, if our salary data matches plus or minus five percent, in the compensation world, it's considered highly competitive. If it's plus or minus ten percent, it's considered competitive. If it's anywhere from ten to fifteen percent, there's a chance to say there might be some misalignment with the market. And if it's greater than fifty, fifteen percent, they're saying, you know what, something's off about this position. There could be a significant misalignment. And then once the survey analysis and report was completed, Gallagher also has an internal quality control process before they. quality control process before they handed it to us. So here's the information, and I won't go through all of it, and it's a lot of data. So we, like I said, I'll give you that and you can look at it more. So the first thing they looked at was actual salary. So there are two parts of it. They looked at actual salary and then they also looked at our salary structure, is our pay grades. As you know, through our ordinance, we have different grades with a minimum and maximum and we have steps in between. So when you look at the actual salary, there are many variables. So you definitely don't want to take actual salary solely on its own because there are different pieces of the actual salary that could play into it. When you're look, comparing somebody's actual salary to their peers, there are things, you know, such as for example, tenure or changes. So it, we do have a very tenured workforce, so many of our employees in this group have, are near or if not at the top. And maybe some of their peers might be, there'll be some turnover in their lower. So you might see comparatively, the percentages are higher. What you want to really look at though is you want to look at actual salary and also the wage, the grades alongside of it. Because if there's show of misalignment all the way across the board, then that's where kind of you want to be concerned. But actual salary in and of itself isn't a sole indicator. So I do want to say that because you'll see between 2017 data and 2019, there is some yellow and so, but there's a lot less yellow when we get over to the other side, but, so kind of going through this. So this is, you can, so I'll just, here's the information. One of the things I'll just point out, the fire battalion chief, and I'll talk about that in 2019, they had reported it kind of oddly, so that actually is invalid data, but I did leave it on the report. And then here's the remainder of the list. And they also have the columns out when you get the report and have a chance to look at it a little bit closer. Out on the, to the right, it says the current range penetration and the market range penetration. What that's talking about is it's going and comparing it to the pay ranges and saying, okay, where in the pay range are they paid? So if it says that an employee is at 100% of the market range penetration, that means that they're paid at the max and anywhere in the middle, if that makes sense. So overall, for 2017 data, the city was at, adding all of those together, we were at 6.11 above the market of actual pay. So that is, if you recall to those definitions, it shows that we are competitive in the market overall as the study as a whole. There were 11 jobs in that part that were identified as misaligned, which means they were greater than 10% of the percentile. And only one, the police records supervisor, was the only one job that was shown as being below. So if you see in all of those yellow, they're saying they're misaligned, but it's showing misaligned in the fact that we're paying more than what their peers, when we're talking about actual salaries. So we're saying our employee versus their peer, where they're aligned at. This number also, keep in mind, I'll touch on the records supervisor because that's definitely, when you see something below, that's something to be concerned about. Looking at the 2019 data, there was some change in that, which was for the positives, so we'll talk about that as well. So, so going now, then this is 2019 data. So one of the things when, also when you get with the 2019, when we did it in 2017, we did not have a communications coordinator, nor did we have a fire marshal. So the 2017, those are blank, but I did add that information for 2019. The other thing is there are some positions that we have that we just do not have a comparable for. For example, the GIS technician in our comparables, in the 11 communities that we have, we only had two organizations that had something similar. So that makes it difficult to really say, you know, to compare it against that. So you'll see some, same with manager of electric operations, that's Brian Bettin, that's a different type of position. So there's the rest of 2019. The overall amount is, here, I'll actually go to this next slide. Overall, the city is 10.59% above the market in actual pay, which means we're just on the cusp of being considered competitive. We're, and there were 14 jobs that were identified as misaligned, but not a single of, one of them was below the market median. So when we're talking about actual salaries again, you can see there's where that is. So I know this is a lot of information, so let's move, now we're going to transition over to the actual salary structure. So we did that same process of all the positions and we list our current range minimum and the median market minimum and then that comparison and then the current range max. And so here's all the information. And then overall, for a whole, this was, this is 2017 data. Overall, the city's salary structure at the end of this study was 2.68% above the market range minimum and negative 0.22 below the market range maximum. So with those two indicators, overall, as our salary structure stands, the current city's range was considered highly competitive, fitting in that definition. And then here's 2019. And two, in between the two years, we have, we don't have as many yellows in our salary range and those all kind of line up more appropriately. While we didn't have a lot of, even in 2017, we had really good data showing, but we've seen some additional kind of lining up. For example, on this page, the only one position that's from our range is showing high is the communication coordinator. But again, that's only comparing it to one other organization, so. And then additionally, here is the other information. I do just want to point out the police records supervisor. As you may recall, in 2017, that was the only one position that was showed under actual salaries of potentially being under the market or misaligned. And then comparing it to 2019, they were right where they needed to be. And then also looking at their pay grade, really across the board, they are at negative 11% for starting and then negative 6.86. So if there is a position at all on this study that I would say that we may need to take a look at possibly considering moving it up a salary grade, potentially this would be. Overall, in regards to the employee itself, based on the 2019 data, they seem to be competitive where they need, where they are, so. So you can see this information, overall, the city's salary structure is 1.7% above the market and then 0.13 above the market and range maximum. So again, we are considered highly competitive overall as a whole. So these were the recommendations given to us by Gallagher and kind of go through this. Review the jobs with misalignment of actual pay, which were in slide 11 and 14, to ensure proper grading and seller competitiveness. I've, we've completed that. Benchmark jobs with a range, minimum, maximum that's identified as misaligned with or below the market should be reviewed. We have gone through that process as well. And then range minimum, minimum and maximum that are misaligned but above the market should be flagged for review, however, which of course makes sense, is that they're not recommending downgrading a position for, but to watch that if it's in the, it's in the highly misaligned. Ongoing recommendations, this is really, now that we've completed this process and what, what really should happen going forward is that there should be an annual classification review of reviewing each job description to ensure the job description stays reflective of the job content. That is a bit labor intensive and again with the staff, but that's our intention is to move forward and get us on whether it's a quarterly that we're going to go through each job description. And every time we have an opening, we absolutely review the job description and update that. Internal hierarchy review, perform an overall hierarchy review, they suggest every two to three years or as needed per job. So for example, if we were to have a new position, I would go through that process. But otherwise, we review it every two to three years, just to make sure internally people are placed in the appropriate grades. And then additionally, our salary structure review, just to make sure that like we, like this process did, is to make sure the minimums and the maximums are appropriate for each job and then they make sense. I think that's it. I know it was a lot of information, so.
Any questions?
I, I mean, you show there where you're going from here, but like some of the salary differences, what can you do with that? Like obviously the, that police position that was being underpaid, it's an easy solution, but the one.
Ones that are high.
The ones that are high. What do you do about that?
Sure. Well, really, like we said, it's just a matter of monitoring them. When we look at the actuals, and that's probably where you see them being high, not necessarily the actual grades. So it's showing that the grades compare, in their comparables are appropriate, so the minimum and maximum. What it's saying is the actuals is the actual person doing the job is potentially paid more than the comparables. And there are many factors that play into that. Like I'd mentioned, we have a pretty, almost, I'll be honest, as I then went through this individually by myself, almost most of the positions, these are employees because they're so tenured, are at the top of the scale already.
Right.
So when you're comparing it to a comparable, maybe they're somewhere down there. So it's, when you're just showing them side by side, it's showing a large increase, but the range itself seems to be appropriate.
And then these results, how did they compare to your expectations?
Um, so, you know, I had, when I first started going into the study, I'd only been here about a year and a half and, and I had heard from, I mean, you hear from different people that we're not paid appropriately or this or that. So I, that's why I wanted to do this, because I thought it was really important, because it had been many years since the city had done something, undertook something like this. So I was pleasantly surprised, so. It's good to know that we are competitive and we're where we need to be and then also in, as I, while I wasn't here during that economic downturn, that we didn't lose ground, which is sometimes difficult to make up, because if we had lost a lot of ground, it would have been a much harder conversation today to say, all right, how, because you just can't financially just boom, just move, move everyone where they need to be.
And lastly, I didn't see Alderman.
Misaligned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
Anyone else, Elliot?
It's not necessarily anything with these numbers, but just as you were mentioning, the number of very well-tenured employees that we have, not necessarily a question for these numbers though, but are, do we then have a plan for what we expect in the next five years?
Right.
Of people retiring and that knowledge void that it would become, you know, a succession plan? Do we, are we setting ourselves up for that?
Absolutely. You know, as you know, we've had conversations specifically in public works, because we do have a lot, a big change in that group. And then also, we've had some conversations in other groups. And so you're, first you're going to see the salary data change because, and then additionally, just how we plan for that going forward. Our biggest group is, actually, our biggest group is that what's called the 45 to 60 is our largest, just purely by age, is our largest employee group. And so as you can imagine, anyone in that group could retire, even a 45-year-old, if they're a police officer, could potentially retire in five years. So you could, that group, that being that that's our largest group, that's going to, we're going to, over the next five to seven years, I would say, we're going to see a lot more. We're already seeing it last year and then into this year, the number of people talking about retirement or actually announcing their retirement, so. Yeah, it's good conversation and definitely we want to keep on top of it because it's a huge knowledge drain, especially in some of those key positions.
Anyone else? Laura, do you have any follow-ups?
Just thank you, Wendy. That was a very good presentation of some complex material. You did a nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Laura, it looks like we've got Police Department next?
Yes. Chief Yule is going to give the annual update for the Police Department. I think when, when people move to the city of Batavia, safety is certainly something that they look at from a statistical standpoint, but I think one of the things that citizens appreciate about the police force that we have here in Batavia is how they get out into the community and get to know the members of the community. And when I go to events and police officers will be attending events for the purpose with assisting and kind of keeping track of the alcohol situation that's going on there. But at those events, people are coming up and they're, they're talking with our police officers and they're engaging with the community. And that's, that's really something, I think, special and unique about what we have here in Batavia, along with the tremendous job that they do in terms of enforcement, solving crimes and making sure that we are involved in regional policing activities to help eradicate some of the biggest crime issues and drug issues that are facing our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Yule.
Thank you, Laura, for all those kind words.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions? As well, I apologize, I'm a little under the weather, so I got a little bit of gravel in my voice tonight, so bear with me, please. Our annual reporting document is, and it's near final draft stage right now, so we expect to have it off to the printer by the end of the week and hopefully in your hands by early next week or maybe middle of the week. So what I did tonight was just pull some of the graphs and charts out that I thought were, would be of interest to the council. And then we'll go with our five-year trend line here in calls for service and our self-initiated field activities, traffic stops. You see 2018, it shows the trends are down a little bit, down maybe a percent and a half in our overall call for service volume. That really doesn't reflect the reality of last year. We were very busy last year with some criminal activity that we really don't experience very often in this community, as you're probably all well aware. Also, very time and labor-intensive investigations that required cooperative efforts between our investigations unit personnel and our patrol personnel. Traffic stops have been trending downward for several years. There are a variety of reasons for that, which I'll get into during the course of this presentation. It doesn't reflect the lack of effort, it just reflects that we're moving people around inside the organization. We are shifting priorities periodically, attrition through injuries and parental leave. We have a deployment going on right now with one of our officers in the military, he's been gone for, he was gone for the last five months of last year and he's not going to be back until probably May or June of this year. So again, there are another different, a couple of different rationales for it as well. We do plan on reversing that trend this year, but some initiatives, we're taking through some grant funding as well as some cooperative enforcement efforts with the state police and other surrounding local law enforcement agencies. The good news is that the crime trends are reflective of national trends in both Part One and Part Two crimes. This is the Part One graphic, includes homicide, criminal sexual assault, robbery, aggravated battery, aggravated assault, burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft and arson. Really, the only areas in our Part One offenses which were up last year were in criminal sexual assaults, up from seven reported in 2017 to nine in 2018, and then in motor vehicle thefts, which we had a significant increase in the region, a large increase in motor vehicle theft, which we were also victimized by in the community. A lot of unlocked vehicles were taken from the community and taken in basically to the city of Chicago and dropped on the West Side. Number of the DuPage and Kane County agencies experienced similar events. Criminal sexual assault, though, that looks like a negative, we're actually in law enforcement seen as a positive. Increased access to law enforcement reporting, people, victims feel more confident in coming out and reporting sex assaults. So we're seeing those numbers trend up again on a national level as well. Again, these are reflective of national trends. Violent crime is down throughout the country in most areas. Part Two crimes, similar, battery assault, criminal damage, trespass, liquor violations, motor vehicle offenses and that sort of thing, down the lowest in the last five years in town here. Something I thought you would want to be informed about, here's our four-year trend on our opioid statistics. If you'll see that 2016 was really our peak and since then, we've been gradually moving back down. And again, that's moving back down. And again, that's, I think, reflective of national statistics as well. We did have two opioid-related deaths last year that occurred within the first quarter of the year, and after that, we did not have any. Those are still open and active investigations. I wish I could provide you more information about that right now, but like I said, those are still in the open investigation stage. Our Narcan saves were down across the board last year as well, which is reflective of a variety of things. Locally, we, we did move to apply a part-time officer to the heroin initiative through the DEA and the Kane County Sheriff's Office. So we've been actively participating in that since about April of last year. They are also assisting us with our opioid death investigations, which is of great assistance. Hundreds of hours have been applied to these investigations so far, and they are still ongoing. Okay, so, we have a traffic enforcement officer dedicated to traffic enforcement, crash investigation. And one of the things that we've really focused our efforts on the last several years, since twenty seventeen, was in truck enforcement on the roads of the community. We also moved to an electronic permitting system, which we went live with last year. And you'll see in the four-year trend line here, we had an explosion in overweight truck permits, permitting last year, over two-hundred-and-sixty permits were filed. And the previous, the highest previous year in the last four was about a hundred-and-fifty-five. So we're very happy with that. Compliance is, we think is increasing because of the ease of access. So we're moving to more electronic means for that. Do you have a question?
Real quick, what's the difference between getting the permit and getting the ticket?
Well-
An overweight ticket versus a permit?
It's substantial.
And I'm sure that that means something, especially with the online-
Absolutely.
...availability of being able to do that.
I can tell you that, this last year, we wrote overweight fines in excess of twenty-four-thousand dollars on its face. Now, obviously, a number of different factors weigh in there, and it doesn't end up being that number oftentimes. But a twenty-four-thousand-dollar ticket versus a, you know, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar permit, so it's, it just makes sense from a business standpoint. So we're seeing an increase in that, we expect that to continue to trend upward. So over eighteen-thousand dollars last year were collected via our online permitting system. Okay, so here's the, the next part of that equation, overweight truck fine enforcement. Our truck enforcement officer made close to a hundred traffic stops on trucks last year for suspected overweights. And you see, there's a three-year trend line, twenty sixteen, about nineteen-thousand dollars, went up to, we started focusing on it last year, went to seventy-eight thousand. And last year, we had over two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars in fines issued to overweight trucks moving through the community.
Wow.
In addition to the, now, that looks like a big number. It, when it trickles down, it's not nearly as large, like a variety of factors at play, starting in court, where they, you know, there can be plea agreements, that sort of thing. And then, everybody is taking a little bit of the fine structure out of it before it gets back to us. So that number's much lower, but it's substantial. In addition to that fine number, it also involves, it's very labor-intensive work. We did reactivate our portable scales, they're being patrolled with in the community now. So oftentimes, the truck enforcement officer can use the portable scales. Sometimes he cannot, based on the overweight, suspected overweight vehicle. So we oftentimes use the, all these scales on Kirk Road. When they're not available, sometimes we have to leave town. So it can take well over an hour to weigh a suspected overweight truck. So that's one of the reasons that our truck, our traffic enforcement unit has been down on general traffic stop enforcement. But it's obviously, it's making headway here, with the increased permitting and the increased fine structure. Another program, we expanded last year, again, to try to combat the opioid epidemic in our community. Previously, I think we went live with the unwanted medical disposal program in twenty thirteen. We saw the numbers go from about two-fifty to three-hundred, and then they kind of leveled off. And that is reflective of pound, total pounds in unwanted medication taken in. Last year, previous to last year, we had restricted only citizens of the city of Batavia. Last year, we opened it up to all citizens, so anybody who lives or works or travels through the community can use our disposal box. And the numbers jumped up to over four-hundred pounds. We took in another hundred pounds of unwanted medication last year. We're pretty proud of that. We're hoping that continues upwards as people become more aware of the program. Strength review, we did have an authorized end strength last year of twenty eighteen, I'm sorry, in twenty eighteen of forty-one officers, with seven full-time, non-sworn, and five part-timers, mostly in our records section, for a total of fifty-three. The forty-first officer was put on hold last year due to the home rule referendum situation and was reinstated near the end of the year. So we ended our year at actual strength of forty sworn officers. The, we had, we've been continually having issues, I think I talked about it in the mid-year review with you last year, as well as at the, my annual report last year, part-time employees in our records section, it'd be, continue to be very difficult for us to keep on hand. We get them in-house, we get them trained, get them up to speed, and then they get hired by other agencies oftentimes. This year was a little bit different. We had some injuries, we had an employee move out of state pretty rapidly. So at the end of the year, we were down to fifty total employees between our sworn and non-sworn workforce. Hiring projections for, for this year, two, you just met last evening, we hired two of those three officers, both certified previously, so they're right in the field training process, which should really speed the time to their first solo call. We are at full strength up to forty-one for about five minutes, and then one of our watch commanders came into my office and gave me his notice of retirement set for this August. So we're expecting to hopefully hire an additional officer in August of twenty nineteen to replace our retiring watch commander. Attrition, again, I think I talked about a little bit earlier. Retirement, Commander Worley retired last September. We weren't able to replace him until last night. So there's been that much lag. That's lost manpower in our, in our patrol division as well. We had an officer leave for parental leave for three months, two non-duty-related injuries, that's six months total. We had a military deployment of five months. In addition to that, what Laura mentioned earlier is absolutely true, we've been trying to expand and use task force concepts to a much greater extent over the last several years, which takes time out of the patrol. We just don't have anywhere else to pull them from oftentimes. Our parental leave officer was also an investigator at the time, so we had to augment our investigations unit and pull an officer out of the patrol division who had previous experience, who ended up coincidentally being one of the primary investigators on the Steak and Shake shooting last year, and did a fantastic job for us. Accidents were up in twenty eighteen, and those, again, are reflective of national trend lines, both traffic crashes and traffic fatalities were up throughout the United States, and we were no different in that regard. We did have one fatal motor vehicle crash on Randall Road last year. That investigation has just been completed, and the state's attorney's office has reviewed, and only traffic charges will result from that case. Okay, there's our breakdown of roadway crashes versus private property. Six-sixty-one, it's up about ten percent from the year prior. Now, this is something that's of critical importance in the city, with all the discussion about walkability, increasing walkability and bikability throughout the community. We did have a spike last year in pedestrian collisions. Our pedal cyclist collisions were static. But again, that is also reflective of the national trends, then the increase of risk factors are being considered as distracted driving, distracted walking and bicycling, larger vehicles on the road. Most of our major manufacturers are now going away from automobiles and moving to all SUV fleets. They're bigger, they're heavier, less visibility out of some of them. And that's one of those things. And then, bringing the walkability initiatives, are bringing more pedestrians and vehicles into conflict. I think there is an initiative at the national level to have the forward collision detectors installed as a standard piece of safety equipment in vehicles, much like the backup cameras were instituted, I think, in twenty seventeen. So hopefully, that's around the corner. Our top ten crash locations, I know Batavia Avenue and Fabian Parkway has been a real bone of contention over the course of the last several years. That was our number-two traffic crash location, following only Randall Road and Fabian Parkway. And just the sheer volume there, we just have more collisions. This is kind of a flipping of the trend from fifteen years ago. You would have seen this chart upside down. It would have been Kirk Road intersections, where you had the highest collision rates, and now, you know, all the traffic has moved to the western portion of the community. But if you see there, every intersection along Randall Road essentially is in our top ten.
She put our thirteen-hundred and fourteen-hundred South Kirk Road. I mean, why are those, like, random addresses?
Probably because they don't necessarily have cross, cross streets. So they're south of intersections or something like that. The fourteen-hour block of North Kirk Road is more than likely near the Douglas Road intersection, the three-way intersection right there. And the fourteen-hour block of North, or, I'm sorry, thirteen-hour block of South Kirk is likely south of Pine Street, but north of Wind Energy. Okay, some of our activities in progress and completed last year and this year, in progress. Our policy manual review continues, expected to be done by last year. I woefully underestimated the amount of work involved in it, and quite honestly, the command staff has often pulled away to do other things. So we reviewed and approved just under fifty policies last year, probably three times that we still have left to go through. So it's going to be several years before we get this thing. We have some general orders and special orders that date back to the nineteen eighties that we're trying to rescind and replace. So it's an ongoing work in progress. Our hard tablet conversion will be complete this year with the assistance of the IS department. We've moved waiver from the laptop computers, the hard tablets, the GTACs, about a third of the price of the Motorola products. So we'll be happy to have that done this year. Our active intruder training is currently ongoing. I think we have another class, our second class tomorrow. Is it tomorrow or Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday. It's Thursday. And then we'll have one out the Public Works Department. We also have another one on tap for the City Council-
Right.
-coming probably after April first.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me. Rapid deployment, joint training with the Batavia Fire Department, and rescue task force training will be occurring this summer. We're still trying to coordinate with the school district. We want to do it in the school district this year. The Police Department did it in an industrial location last year, and it was very appropriate, based on most recent occurrences. Okay, we will go through the selection and training of the task force officer for application either to a full-time position at the DEA Heroin Initiative or the North Central Narcotics Task Force. The plan is, with the NCNTF group, to move a third group. There's one currently up in McHenry County, one currently operating out of Cook County, but nothing really active in Kane. With the completion of the St. Charles Police Department, the new St. Charles Police Department here is scheduled for September, we're hoping to bring enough officers together to be able to have a, a local task force of tri-cities extension officers. And that will probably occur sometime around when we have our fortieth and forty-first officers trained up and out responding to solo patrols. Some improvements to our basic inventory equipment for our vehicles. We're adding some additional ballistic shields, and we're going to be issuing individual tourniquets and first aid pouches to all of our officers. And these are largely a result of the Aurora Mass Shooting After Action Review. We did, we do currently have three ballistic shields deployed in the field at all times. It wasn't enough that day. So we want, we want to put at least three or four more in the squads as soon as possible. And those are hand-carried shields that will stop low-level, or high-level, high-capacity pistol shot and low-level rifle shot. Again, the annual report document will be finished hopefully soon and out to you before the first week of April. This year, we'll be conducting our police officer applicant testing. It's scheduled for May eighteenth at the Rotolo Middle School. We already have the publications out with the Blue Line and some local media, as well as on the city's website. Okay, this is one I thought you might be excited to hear about, with the assistance to the IS department. We're getting ready to go live with the electronic permitting for the overnight parking process. Just putting the finishing, I guess, fine-tuning touches on it, and we're hoping that later this week, we should be able to roll it out to the public.
Will that make that instantly available to your officers out in the field, so that they can look at a list?
Yes, yes. So the citizens will be able to upload their permit requests remotely with the web-based application. And then, on the flip side of it, our officers will be able to see everything that's uploaded and approved on a nightly basis in their squad cars.
That's good.
Currently, they can do that already. It's just being manually uploaded by our records technicians. So our records technicians are pretty happy about it, too. It's going to decrease some workload for them, so they can do something else that they don't have time to do right now.
Yeah.
So I talked about some of our initiatives as far as traffic enforcement. This is scheduled for the last week of April of twenty nineteen, high-visibility enforcement campaign. It's going to be really, saturation patrols, traffic enforcement, us in concert with the Illinois State Police, surrounding municipal and county agencies. We'll be out there, we'll be focusing on some of our high collision areas, and we'll be looking, looking for speed violations, distracted driving, seatbelt violations, just general safety issues. Additionally, we try, we've applied for an IDOT traffic enforcement grant to cover the same areas of violation. And if we, if we get this grant, which we hope to do so pretty soon, we should be notified shortly. We will be doing it on major holidays, plus several additional dates through twenty nineteen. So those are in progress for this year. Last year, we completed our department-wide EVOC training out at the DuPage Airport. So all of our officers received four hours of training in emergency vehicle operations. CPR, AED recertifications occurred last year, so we're all compliant with that. The state is continuing to require more training mandated. We went through an administrative training stand-down last year. Our entire workforce was trained in the areas of use of force, ethical policing, and procedural justice. In addition to that, twenty-seven of our officers are now CIT, Crisis Intervention Team-trained, which is an extensive training course to deal with people who are experiencing human crisis, mental instability, substance abuse issues. Basically, it's hardcore de-escalation techniques. It's forty hours, it takes a lot of time out, away from the wheels, but it's important training. We hope to have the entire workforce trained by June of twenty twenty. Some community outreach initiatives. If you notice, a box went up on the wall outside the Police Department last year, just some safety pamphlets, anti-drug awareness materials. We also did our community outreach with Shop With A Cop. We did some trunk-or-treat events throughout the community last year. They were pretty well-received on Facebook and social media. Our conducted energy device, TASER training, our retraining went on last year. So we have twelve TASER X-tubes, two-shot tasers, deployed in the field every day now and every shift. We do pool those, because they are expensive. Talked about this already, expansion of the drug collection program. And that's it? Yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
I was curious, you mentioned the increase in vehicle versus pedestrian, and you mentioned the possibility that federal law for the front collision avoidance. For at least twenty-five years, Canada has had daytime running lights. Have you heard anything about daytime running lights being mandated?
No, I've not heard about that, but that is an excellent idea.
Idea.
I'm just shocked that we haven't done that yet, so.
I guess one of the only things with the crime increase, the one that was the largest, was more of a, if I recall, a more organized activity, a couple incidents of that for the spike in motor vehicle.
That's correct. It happened over a fairly short period of time. They struck in several locations throughout the community, and they were, I think they were looking for something else, but when they found an unlocked vehicle with keys in the vehicle, they took it with them. Well, other than that, they were looking for loose items inside the vehicles as well.
I'm going to follow up on, I guess, kudos to your, to your department. What Laura had to say is, one evening, two or three years ago, I was right out on the corner here, and there was a young, young man who I knew, I know his family, and he had a plastic sword, and he was swinging it, and he is a little slow, you know, and a police car drove by and waved to him. And he's, he's a tall kid, and he's a black boy, too. And I just, and I said hello to him, and he kept playing with his sword, he was doing Star Wars, and it was at night. And I just couldn't help but thinking, you know, in some other cities in our country, I mean, that young boy could have been shot dead. And our police officer here in Batavia waved hello, recognized him from being around the community, and so I do- And so I always think to that, that, you know, here in Little Batavia, you know, even our police officers recognize people. They do have outreach to the community. And they try to embrace the community, I guess is what I'm trying to say, all the community, which I happen to applaud.
Well, thank you for that observation. And that's true. I would attribute that to our community policing initiatives. And, you know, the easiest way to do that is to be out of the cars, be in the public. We walk through the stores regularly. We know the youth of the community. So the fact that we're, you know, a medium-sized community, but we still have a small-town mindset, it's the way the police department operates. So more than likely, the officers that you saw that evening knew that young man and knew what his situation was because we're out there in the community.
The other day, the day it was super windy, I saw an officer going down Van Buren, riding people's garbage cans, taking them out of the middle of the street and putting them back in the yards. And I was really impressed by that. I thought, you know, they could just drive around him and not do anything. But they were literally stopping the car, getting out, picking up the garbage can, moving it back into the parkway. And I thought, wow, that's just incredible. Plus, they wave at me every day when they see me walking around, which is always kind of neat too.
Do you remember when we had the snow that stuck in the stoplights? Because it was from the north and it was the heavy wet stuff. Many of our north-facing stop signs throughout our community, and those number in the hundreds, by the way. Chief Yule and the command staff offered to have the police officers that night, if they saw a stop sign that was covered with snow, stop and brush the snow off. And that's just, you know, the type of individuals that they are where if they see a way that they can help, they get it out of their car and they do it.
Yeah, I just want to share the insight. Pull up, pull up my clip. Just want to share the insight. I apologize for my hoarse voice. I still have it. Chief Yule and I are fighting this, same thing, I think. My career with the city of Batavia started on December 16th, 1969, which is 49 years ago this year. And will be 50, I guess. So I've been with, and what I started on that night was Alderman Brown's father, who was mayor, appointed me to be a member of what was then the Batavia Auxiliary Police. It was a part-time division of the police department. And I was pretty active in it. And so I got to go out there and get into the middle of the fray with the boys and was on for nine years and ended up being the sergeant of the auxiliary when I retired, but, or left. But anyway, I just want to say that having had that experience 50 years ago and knowing what we dealt with then versus what I get to see reading the reports that Chief Yule's guys put out every day here, it's a totally different world. And the complexity and the smartness and the challenges that the men and women of the Batavia Police Department have to deal with today would leave us dry in our socks back in 1969. And I say that only because I'm very proud of the fact that the Batavia Police Department has continued to stay with the times and has risen to the occasion, but they face a very, very difficult and challenging job. And every day, every hour, that's some new thing hitting them. And I mean, we only have to look as nearby as Aurora a couple of weeks ago to see what happened there. And grace by God, it wasn't in Batavia, but I mean, something like that could happen here. And, you know, then I'm sure we could rise to the occasion and handle it. But I just don't want to underestimate or underappreciate what we have to face at the police department. This is probably one of the more challenging moments in the history of the world. And a lot of it now has come down on not necessarily our police department, but the profession of the law enforcement altogether. And you need to only turn on the news every day in and out and somebody's having a problem with the police and doesn't like the way they're acting. And the poor guys, in my opinion, are just, every place they turn, they're getting stepped on or kicked or insulted or whatever have you. And at the same time, Chief Yule and his men and women continue to rise to the occasion and every day do us proud. So, you know, if he were to come in here and say, I need more resources or I need it, I would certainly encourage the council to say, well, we need to take a serious look at what's going on here because we do have some heavy, heavy duty challenges. And we're not alone. This is not some quiet little burg where nothing happens. You know, we've become, what one of his officers told me last year when they had stopped a gentleman who was running around the neighborhoods over on the southwest side of town trying to get into cars, that they looked upon places like Batavia as shopping centers of affluence, where whatever car you went into, you could find something that you could probably steal and sell or use yourself and whatever have you. And so this is a real hot place to come in and help yourself if you can. But thanks to the good efforts that the Batavia Police Department puts on on a daily basis, we don't have that necessarily. But if we weren't here and we didn't have the high, high, high visibility that Chief Yule maintains, we would be in a world of hurt here because I think we scare a lot of people off because they can come into Batavia and within two or three minutes, hopefully, they're going to see a squad car. And he's dialed them up, so they're real visible and easy for people to see. And it's one of the best advertisements I've ever seen as a community that we got those high visibility cars. Because anybody that wants to come in here and visit the shopping center of affluence probably has second or third thoughts and goes someplace else to try to do their dirty work because we do maintain, I think, a presence here, which we should be very pleased about.
Thank you.
One more thing. One of the things that I think to me is of real concern is that not only are the officers trained to be able to de-escalate the situations that they have to deal with on a daily basis, but that they have resources available to them after the situations that they have to be in. I think that that's really important, that we don't forget that. Because I think to maintain the standards that we expect from them or what they are expected to do every day, I think they have to be taken care of. So I just want to make sure, I didn't see anything in your thing about the AID or the stuff that we have available to our citizens when we go out to help them in situations. But also I think that that has to be something we have to think about as council members, that we have to be able to take care of our own, the guys in the force that need help. And they need it and they need to know that it's available.
I can assure you that's a priority for us as well. We do not use AID as a resource for our officers. We do have a different organization that assists us and they are subject matter experts. They are practitioners who have transitioned into social work, who assist us free of charge with dealing with those kinds of situations. So we do make those things available to our officers after every critical incident.
Because I think that that's really important, that we keep talking about that and we make sure that we don't ever forget any of that. Because I think that is extremely important.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Laura, do you have anything you can pull in?
Nope.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, Laura, then we're going to move on over to the fire department.
And the fire department had a really great year last year, achieving ISO Class 1 certification. They did so in conjunction with TRICOM Dispatch as well as our water department. But it really was the fire department who did the lion's share of the work necessary to gather all of the data, have all of the procedures in place, document that those procedures had been followed. And they did it in excellent fashion. We received such warm congratulations and adulation not only from the ISO organization, but recently the state fire marshal also came out to the Batavia Police Department and expressed his appreciation for what the city of Batavia's police, fire department had done in order to achieve the Class 1 certification. In addition to that, these guys are expert lifesavers. And so many people in our community have reached out to me and to members of the city council and directly to the chief about situations in which our fire department personnel were the difference between their family member being here or not being here. And chief, would you tell the recent story about the congratulations that our firefighters received when they were treating a very young person experiencing stroke?
Just last week, we got accolades from the hospital because we transported a stroke patient over there. He was a 25-year-old working out over at one of the fitness places. And the signs, I mean, for a 25-year-old, you usually don't think stroke and everything like that, but all the signs just kind of pointed to it. And they were able to get him to the hospital and they were able to administer the TPA for the stroke within 28 minutes of us finding him. So, and that was a record for the hospital. So they were very appreciative of our efforts out there. Thank you. So for 2018, what we have, our call volume went up over 200 calls. It was a six and a half percent increase for 2018 over 2017. And you'll see that for the last five years, our call volume has gone up each year. 2017 was probably the lowest increase, but each year roughly, we're averaging about three or four percent increase each year. We roughly do about 57% of our calls are for EMS calls. Over 2017, our false alarms were up 26%. That's an additional 118 calls. I think most of that came from the pretty rough winter that we had. A lot of that broken sprinklers and stuff like that ended up with false alarms. Service calls were up 13% from 2017 and fire calls were up 12%, which is only about 10 calls from 2017. One thing that is kind of unique is that one facility in town accounts for 11% of all of our calls. And four facilities, the top four facilities in town account for 20% of all of our calls. Lift assists. Batavia does more lift assists than St. Charles and Geneva combined. In 2018, we did almost 250 lift assists. We typically send an engine for a lift assist for two reasons. We send it because it has an additional, a third person usually, and it also frees up our ambulances. Our ambulances are tremendously busy right now, going between the three cities to try to stay available. So that's why we send an engine for them. Tri-City Ambulance is looking to start billing for lift assists, especially at assisted care facilities. And so sometime in 2019, you may see me come back to you as a council to talk about charging for lift assists. Fire losses for 2018, we were down nicely. You'll see the chart on the bottom. In a couple of years, we're over a million dollars in fire loss. Last year, we were at $350,000. Most of it was involved vehicles in garages, in fact, over 50% of it did. My budget for last year was mostly in line with expectations, so a couple of things went over. I was over a little bit on fuel because of higher prices, station maintenance because we had to replace an air conditioning unit. TRICOM was $13,000 over because we had to match a grant for our Starcom radios. We got that grant. It was well over a million dollar grant that we got last year and we had to match that grant. But later on this year, they are going to reimburse us for that 10%, so we're going to get the money back. And then Tri-City Ambulance was $15,000 under budget last year due to a spend down in their reserves. Near the later half of 2018, I applied for two grants that are still being evaluated through FEMA. The first one is for air packs. It's a $250,000 grant. And the second one is for an engine pumper, a $450,000 grant. Very good chance that I will not get the vehicle grant. That is just too hard to get. But I ask for it every year, just in case they're willing to hand out money. I'm there with my hand out. The air packs, I've been awarded three air pack grants in my tenure. One at this department and two at other departments. So I'm good at it, except you know what? They're just getting harder and harder to get these days. So we'll see what happens. But both of those items are things that are on my capital expenditure, capital replacement list for the next couple of years. This year, I've already been approved for a command car. But 2020 will be the new fire engine and 2021 is when we replace the air packs. So both of those things that I asked for grants for are for things that will be coming, that we'll be purchasing in the near future. The last thing to look at on this one is in 2024 or somewhere around there, we'll be looking to purchase a ladder truck. Currently, ladder trucks are going for just a little bit over a million dollars right now and it'll be well over a million dollars by 2024. Tri-City Ambulance, in 2019, they are looking to staff a sixth ambulance between the three cities. That ambulance is going to be during peak daytime periods, probably from 8:00 in the morning until 6:00 in the evening. It hasn't been completely approved yet, but it'll be based out of Geneva's West Station. But with as busy as those ambulances are, it'll probably be filling in vacancies in the other, in all three towns throughout the daytime. And this is my last, my last page here. And what I want to show you here, on the left chart, is the number of times that we have concurrent calls. And that's for the last five years. You'll notice that the blue line at the top is the number of times that we have doubles or two calls at the same time. The line right below, at the red line, is the number of triples, the times that we have three calls at the same time. And then so on down the line there. Our department, we have an engine, a fully staffed engine out of the east side and a fully staffed engine out of the west side. So we can handle obviously single calls all day long. We can handle double calls pretty well, pretty easily with both of our fully staffed engines. It's when we get to that third concurrent call, the triples, that we end up being stretched to our limit a little bit. We have a truck company, but that truck company doesn't, isn't fully staffed and it only has two people on it. And it really can't handle a call completely. So what I've done on the graph on the right is I've extended it out. And as you see, the, all the numbers go up a little bit as years go on, kind of a thing. But it'll be that red line, that triple calls, that will be determining whether or not I'll be asking for additional staff in the future to fully man the third company in town. So somewhere around the year 2021, 22, we end up with a triple almost once a day. And then by 2023, it ends up being a triple probably twice a day, kind of a thing. So those are the kind of things that I'll look to try to staff that truck company. And that's all I have.
Chief, in the concurrent calls, your lift assist are included in there also, right?
They are included in there, yes.
Just as a report from the Tri-City Ambulance Board, that's something that we've talked about for several years. I really felt like that's something we have to do, especially for all of the assisted care facilities that choose to use our fire department as an unpaid staff member for them to have because then they have no liability for a lift assist to pick somebody up. So in my mind, the money that we would charge, no matter what number Tri-City Ambulance decides on for that, it's got to be less than what it would cost them to put somebody on staff for. And we need to be reimbursed for it. I mean, we send people there every day.
Where are their vehicles out getting there?
Every day, we're sending somebody there. And then if we have an ambulance call somewhere else, we're sending a fire truck. If it happens to be our ladder truck, that's the most expensive vehicle we have out there, but that might be the only truck that's there. So it's something we have to, we have to do.
But haven't we talked about this every year for the last, I've heard it eight years worth?
I think Tri-City Ambulance Board is convinced now that we have to do this year. So I think that's something, very shortly, we'll be coming back with a recommendation on what we're going to charge for it.
Other questions?
Yeah. Just a quick question. When you do the lift assist, do you use the sirens when you do that?
No.
Okay, just because I live on Batavia Avenue, so I hear the sirens go by and I'm always wondering.
It depends on how the call comes in. If a call comes in as a person that fell and they're injured, yes, we do use the lights and sirens. If it comes in as a lift assist just to get somebody back into bed or somebody back into a chair, we go non-emergency.
Thank you.
Just curious, at what point with the trends of the lifts and only 2% of the calls are for fire, at what point do we change? calls are for fire, at what point do we change your name from a fire department to something else, some lift department or emergency department or something? Why do you think, in seriousness, I mean, that's a huge increase, the trend. What, what do you attribute that to?
I think that our call volume increases every year, and we only have a certain amount of time within the daytime to fill it. For instance, when I first got here, I think we were averaging eight calls a day. Right now, we're averaging about 12 calls a day. So, as you put more calls into a single day, eventually, more and more are going to overlap on there, and I think that's the reason. And already, like, let's see, last year, Windmill Landings opened for the first time over on the west side, and we've already gotten, I believe, around 50 calls already over there. So, as these places open, you're going to see even more and more calls fill in there.
And then are there other places that are charging for lift service?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, in the news today, Sycamore, I think it was? Sycamore has been charging, they've been charging, I believe, $600 for a lift assist, and now they're going to raise it up to $860.
Wow.
Yeah.
It'll be curious to see how that charge affects those trends.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Somebody else over here? No?
Mayor?
Yeah. Many of you may have seen this in a letter that I co-authored with Mayor Regina from St. Charles that we sent out to our state legislators in the last few weeks. But with the HIPAA laws that Tri-City Ambulance has to operate under, and the HIPAA is the Health Protection Act, I guess, and we can't really disclose what it is we're doing with the patient, or who that patient was, or where we took them, and it's really, so, I mean, we have a record, but it's confidential, and we can't talk too much about it. But one of the things the chiefs were able to do, at the request of Mayor Regina and myself, was we asked them to analyze the ambulance calls for the three towns collectively and determine, out of the last year's responses, how many times a Tri-City Ambulance responded to a call where there was some type of drug interreaction taking place in that call. And the number they came back to us was 780 calls last year between the three towns for drug interreactions. Now, if you put the math to that, that's two a day. Now, you know, we're, I think, a pretty good little area here, but to have the fact that we have two a day, I think it's something that all of us should have some concern about. And I say this only in the perspective that, as our friends down in Springfield discuss the recreational marijuana legalization, I think there's a fear by, certainly myself, and I'm only speaking for myself, that when that happens, and I'm pretty sure it will happen, that that's probably going to significantly increase their responses yet again, along with the Batavia Police Department and every other agency that's going to have to get involved in this. So, you know, if you think, well, we're recreationalizing marijuana because we're going to make a bunch of money, I would be interested to see a couple of years down the road after it happens, what the real cost of this is going to be to local governments. I think there's going to be a real cost effectiveness to this thing, that those who are running around the state right now trying to sell the idea, I don't know if they want to talk about that or not, but that's one great concern I have as to where this is all going. And the fact that I've got 780 in the Tri-City Ambulance in the past year that we know about, and now you're going to make it a lot easier for people to access drugs, what will that number be in the future? And needless to say, you know, as long as I'm still sitting here, I'm going to be asking them to give me an update on that number, because I think it certainly is one that we need to follow very closely. And Alderman Wolf, who does an excellent job of serving with me as the representative on the Tri-City Ambulance Board, the way it's set up, each town has two officials from the city council on the board. So, there's six of us, there are city officials voting, and then Geneva Township and the Batavia Fire Protection District also have a vote on it. So, there's eight people there voting. But we meet four, five, six times a year, and they're pretty intensified meetings. It used to be we'd go over there and we'd get, I'm the chairman, we'd get done in 10, 15 minutes. This last minute, last time we were there, it was an hour and 45 minutes when we got into all this between them chasing down the drug numbers and talking about the pickup the people on the lift assists and everything else that's going on. So, it's becoming a very complex situation. But again, to the credit of our three fire chiefs, they do an excellent job of running this ambulance. And what's most interesting about it, and we got cited by the state as an attaboy, that this is run by private, is an ambulance that's operated by private contractors within a union firehouse. And that's not, many people would say that never could be done. Well, we've done it very successfully here, and it's worked.
And I think it saved the Tri-Cities a lot of money.
It has.
A lot. Chief, one of the things I was going to ask you, there's no plans for replacement of ambulances at this point?
They're replaced, almost every year, we buy a new ambulance and replace one of the older ones.
It wasn't on your list, though, was it?
No, but Tri-City Ambulance, that comes strictly out of Tri-City Ambulance, which is a separate.
And we pay a fee to be part of Tri-City Ambulance from the city's standpoint, and then Tri-City Ambulance manages personnel, but also the equipment, the ambulance itself. And I think it's in every other year, Batavia would get a new one, or every third year, Batavia gets.
Actually, Batavia gets back-to-back ambulances, and then all the other towns get theirs, and then like five years later, then we start with ours again.
So, now we'll have six. And I think the big important thing there is when we do have two calls, that one is only two miles away, that third ambulance, or should be within two or three miles of us.
And you can send them a pumper with a paramedic already on board, so that really is, to the credit of Chief Dyke, we got that idea in place. So, we're well-served EMS-wise. I'm very proud of the service we offer. It's come a long way. And we were one of the pioneers of the rescue squad idea back in the early, as I talked about the other night with John here. And we've brought that service a long way from where it was, but over the years, there's a lot of people that hold their heart of gratitude, of appreciation for what that ambulance has done. And I would suggest that when we went to referendum in 2006 to build the two new fire stations using a half-cent sales tax that we were asking for, and the fact that 70% of the people in Batavia voted for that referendum in support of that, I think there's a lot of appreciation for that fire department rescue squad in that vote.
Anybody else?
There's a hard copy of my annual report in everybody's mailbox. Thank you.
All right. The next item is item 13. Laura, that's project status.
I want to keep it brief tonight because I know that we have an executive session. So, just a few things to mention. That was the last of the annual presentations. And so, now what we will do is take each one of those presentations and post them on the web and make sure on social that people know that each one of those presentations is available, and also the date at which the presentation was given to the committee as a whole, so that in case they want to see the BATV recording of that, they can go on and see. I think these are important to do, to stay in touch with all of the many things that are going on in the department. Each week, we have agenda items that are reflective of the work that's going on in the department, but I think it helps to see it all hung together as our plan. I also want to let you know that today, we received word that the water in the city of Batavia is the best tasting water in the state of Illinois. So, Jeremy Barki, who is our, did you hear that, Susan? Barki.
Barki. Not Barky. Barki.
Who is our water superintendent, is in Springfield, Illinois, attending the Illinois section of the American Water Works Association. And part of that is a water tasting competition among all the municipalities in the state of Illinois, and Batavia came out on top.
We need to broadcast that.
We will broadcast it far and wide. Also, it is Restaurant Madness Week, so we hope that all of our residents are getting out there to frequent those restaurants who are part of that. Utilize the postcard that you received in the mail, or you can go to the Batavia Main Street website and print out the coupon there. There are many restaurants in our community. It's a great opportunity to try someplace that you have never tried before. Also, early voting is going on this week at City Hall. It is through the 22nd this week, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Next week, from March 25th to 28th, again, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You just utilize the north entrance that's down by the police department, and they're set up for voting there. And I think that's all I have.
Item 14, others. Does anybody have another? Mark?
Laura, actually, you were going to talk about, I don't know if you wanted to bring it up, about the question about the photography?
Oh, yes.
The date?
Yeah. Actually, we can talk about that after, since it's not really a, yeah. Before everybody leaves.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I had a question. I've received a few phone calls, and this is probably for Gary. On Emmanuel Lutheran on Hart Road, there's been ice buildup all winter, and there's a couple of construction horses out there. Is that due to stormwater runoff, or is there something else going on there?
Actually, it has to do with their parking lot and their drainage, and we've been working with them. Really, there's water coming from under their parking lot through the gravel that's been seeping out on the side of the hill and under the roadway. So, Scott Haynes is working with them, and our engineering folks are working with them. This summer, hopefully, we'll be able to get a lot of that water redirected into their basin as opposed to out on, out under the roadway.
Okay. Thank you.
Lucy?
I had a contractor out at my house today, and I just have some clarification. He took a survey, and he's going to come to the city to get a permit, and said he also has to come and get a bond. And he's like, you know, I like working in Batavia, but I wish you only had one bond requirement when we register, rather than a bond for every permit. No?
There's no bond requirement for permits. Some licenses are right away. We're doing it right away.
It's a driveway.
Okay.
But so, for every, but he said for every permit, unlike other cities that require it at registration. So, it's only one.
They have the option to apply for a larger bond that is applicable to all projects for the entire year. It is an option that is, that's available to them.
Is there additional cost?
Yeah, probably. It's, they have the option of either a $10,000 bond for each permit that they do, or they can do one $75,000 bond for an entire year.
Okay. I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yep, Gary?
One last plea. April 9th, Prairie State Lobby Day, Drive Down. I know that Laura and myself and Rahad are planning to attend. Benny Alderman would like to attend, or the mayor would like to attend. Let myself know and Laura know. And I have to register at the end of the week, so I only have a couple of days left. I got to get this registered.
There is some very important pending legislation that could negatively affect municipal utilities, and so I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to sit down with the legislators. I talked about it when we did our legislative drive down with Metro West, but I, this is even going to be more focused specifically on being able to have conversations around Prairie State and being a municipal utility.
Is it a drive during back in one day?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, during one day.
Just one quick question for you, Mayor. What is the status of the LGDF? Is that, I know the state was looking.
That's the state income tax.
Right. Are they looking to still take it like they were saying?
Well, it's someplace between 5% and 6%, they think, but nobody can really tell us for sure what that number is. But, you know, right now, the state of Illinois is flat broke. Any money they get, there's bills laying on the table that need to be paid. And so, I don't, you know, there's all these people wandering around here pandering all this new legislation and new requirements and all this good stuff. I don't know how they're going to pay for it all. Somebody needs to start asking these legislators, do they really know what they're doing down there? Because they're kind of voting in insanity. I mean, it's just crazy what's happening down there.
So, where do we sit as a city of Batavia with our tax revenues?
I know Peggy's not here. Do we know what our, I mean, we're doing, we're okay.
Right. We've adjusted to them reducing the LGDF. They took a 10% WAC at the LGDF two years ago. Last year, they restored half of that. I do not anticipate that they are going to fully restore the other half of that anytime soon, even though there are two bills currently. One is to restore, fully restore it next year, and the other is to restore it by 1% each of the next five years. But what Mayor is saying is true. It's nice to say those things, but they've got, you know, $8 billion of unpaid bills on their desks that they haven't paid. I find it hard to believe that they're going to restore any more than the 5% that we've been fortunate that they restore. That being said, our budget has adjusted for the loss.
I mean, we've been fortunate, you know, we've had some nice revenues, sales tax and other things that have come in, so we've been able to keep our head above water thanks to the city leadership we have. As far as watching Peggy and Laura do a wonderful job, in my opinion, on a day-to-day basis, just kind of keeping us in tow here and not letting us go in a different direction. And I think if something were to happen, you ladies and gentlemen would be the first to hear about it, that we were going to need to do something. But, you know, I go to, into Chicago, and I don't mean to hark on this, but I go in with all these other mayors in the area, and they're all looking at me like I'm the mayor out here in utopia. And we got all this great stuff going, and, you know, we got policemen and firemen, and we got sales tax, and we got, you know, all this great stuff, and they don't have any of that. And, you know, I could name towns that are telling me their last retailers are leaving the building right now. I mean, they're, they're just getting out because there's nobody got any money, and nobody's buying anything, and everybody's smashing and grabbing, so forget it, we're leaving. And so, there's, the state's got a real problem in some parts of this region where they're going to probably have to go back in and reinvent the municipal government, as it's previously been known, and take some of these towns and make them neighborhoods as part of a bigger something or another that they're going to have to create to put the cops and the firemen, public works back on the street.
Did I answer your question?
Too much.
More than you cared to hear. I do have one quick one, and Gary, this one's probably for you. Kind of piggybacked, made me think of when Mike brought that up, about that ice on Reddent Road. The extreme weather conditions we had this winter, I'm wondering if you have any idea how badly that is putting us behind on our overtime budget and salt and such for taking care of all those situations? And even beyond that, all we got to do is drive around town, and what we had going on here this year with all the freeze-thaw cycles, I think the roads have really taken a tremendous beating this year in our town, along the entire state. But in your opinion, and maybe you could get back to us on that, with the kind of extreme weather we've had this year, is that going to do anything to our projections for the road improvements coming up? Are we going to have to accelerate? Is there going to be more cost, or are we going to have to learn how to live with what we have?
I will get back to you on the overtime and salt, as to where we stand here today. And collectively, engineering and streets is going to get back to council in just a few months here with the mid-year update and strategic planning on kind of where we stand with roadway funding and the condition of our roadways and where we stand in the large picture.
Is my thinking correct that we?
Your thinking is correct, yes. We, I mean, this is, this is the larger picture of the Suncast issue, seven and a half million dollars. Where's our roadway funding coming from? Yes, there's a, that's a big question to be answered out there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Then we do have item number 15, which is executive session, and the purpose is for potential litigation. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by O'Brien, second by Mike Slur. On favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, we're going to go into executive session, and there won't be anything to come out of it.